All right, let's call this meeting to order. Josh, would you mind doing the pledge of allegiance for us?
I would love to.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've got an invocation by Troy Stanley, the pastor of First Christian Church.
Let's pray. Our Father in heaven, we thank you so much for this day, for the opportunity to gather together and to make decisions of leadership for this community, watch over us, and give us knowledge and understanding and perseverance, and help us to have brotherly love, and above all, to love all. Father, thank you so much for allowing us to live in such a beautiful place and to work in such a beautiful place. May we be good stewards of everything you've blessed us with and leave it better than when we found it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. City Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Daxton.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hirston.
Here.
Mayor Capizzi.
Here.
All right. We've got a special presentation for the Women in Construction Week. You're welcome to come up. I'll, I'm gonna... I'm gonna read a proclamation for you guys. All right, so I have a proclamation here. It says, "Whereas the Space Coast Chapter has distinguished itself for 27 years as the voice of women in construction in Brevard County, and whereas the work done by the Space Coast Chapter has benefited Brevard County through community development and educational programs, and whereas the Space Coast Chapter has unceasingly promoted the employment in advance of women in construction industry, and whereas the construction community represented by the Space Coast Chapter has a driving force in fostering community development through renovation and beautification projects, promotion of skilled trades careers, and positive vision of the future, and whereas the Space Coast Chapter has sought to achieve successful results for Brevard County and surrounding areas in a cooperative spirit with other organizations. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Keith Capizzi, mayor of Cocoa Beach, Florida, do hereby recognize the Space Coast Chapter and its many dedicated volunteers for its steadfast work on behalf and support of women in construction, and do proudly proclaim the week of March 5/11/2024 as Women in Construction Week, and encourage our citizens to congratulate the organization on its many accomplishments." Proclaimed the 7th day of March 2024.
So, good evening. My name is Kate Howick. I'm the president of the National Association of Women in Construction, Space Coast Chapter, and I bring with me a handful of our chapter members who are dedicated to our industry and our community. While women make up most of, almost half of the total workforce in the U.S., we only make account of about 11% of the population in our industry. So, NAWIC provides us with a platform to collaborate with like-minded professionals across the trades, continue to advocate for women within the industry, and encourage the next generation of young women in construction to seek out new opportunities. NAWIC hosts over 115 chapters and upwards of 4,000 members across the U.S., and we are all celebrating this WIC Week 2024 in many different ways. We are truly honored on the eve of International Women's Day, a day intended to celebrate women across the globe, that the city of Cocoa Beach has taken a moment to recognize the women who work locally to build a better Space Coast. Thank you, City Commission, City Staff, and your exceptional team for sponsoring our organization with this proclamation. We support, your support is instrumental in our continued growth and outreach efforts within the communities that we serve, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You wanna come up?
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Oh, sure. Can I?
Thank you.
I'll make the rounds. Thank you so much.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Steel toe?
I can just tell you up here.
Okay.
I read my Bible, and there's an Old Testament. There's actually, when Israelis were taken back over, after they came out of Egypt, there was, there's actually verses that say that this woman constructed cities, there were like three different cities that...
Yeah.
It's actually inscribed in scripture.
There we go.
So, you guys are 2,000 years going.
Ask our pastor, right?
Were those vans steel toe?
Uh, no, no, not so much. I'm working on it. Thank you. A picture or something? Somebody get a picture?
I've been taking pictures of that, but...
Thank you so much.
We'll take that outside.
Thank you.
All right. Wayne, we've also got another, something that we would like to, to recognize?
Okay, yeah, so this is my, my item, and I wanted to thank Career Source Brevard on behalf of the city and on behalf of myself personally. So before I go any further, maybe Steve and Jim can come up and tell everybody what Career Source Brevard is and what they do, so they know, everybody knows what we're talking about here.
Okay.
Well, Career Source Brevard is the sponsored employment agency in your community, throughout the entire community of Brevard. You may wonder why some of the work that we do as your employment agency here, we also serve the community in a variety of ways. Not only do we find employment for each and every person who happens to be looking for employment, we sponsor a lot of different programs. We sponsor youth programs, we sponsor adult education programs, we sponsor welfare transition programs. And additionally, when communities are impacted by hurricanes, like the ones that we've received in the past many times, the Department of Labor sees this as an opportunity to partner with the communities, which is what we've done here with Cocoa Beach and many other communities. But Cocoa Beach has been an outstanding partner for us. We've been able to do a lot of different work with them to help them recover. So what, the way the Department of Labor sees this is, many individuals may have lost their job because of the hurricane, or they may be dislocated because of another event, or they could be long-term unemployed. Well, if these individuals are not working at this time, what's in the best interest of the community and what's in the best interest of the nation? Has to help those individuals gain employment. And through the recovery efforts and the grants that we receive, we're able to go into the communities, help you recover, but also help these individuals recover also. They're getting skills training, they're getting a paycheck, they're not on unemployment, they're out there every day helping you do some of the work. I think we have some slides that we're gonna show here in a minute on some of the work they've done. And this is all because grants are sponsored by the Department of Labor, and your current Career Source Brevard, the employment agency in this county, has applied for those grants. And men like Steve here and Sam have done an excellent job in finding projects, partnering with your city manager, partnering with your community to do some of this work. So that's how you got the money, and we've been doing this for a very, very long time, since about 2004. Every hurricane we've had, we've managed to get several million dollars to help our communities. Okay, so the projects that they actually do have been kind of supervised and directed by Donald Jenkins. Donald, you're not getting out of here. Donald?
Sir?
I just wanted to thank you. Donald is my go-to guy. Him and I have been working together for a long time, and he's done a great job with them, keeping them busy, pointing them in directions where we needed the resources. And Donald's the kind of guy that, when he tells me he'll get something done, I don't even flinch, and I know that, and I appreciate it, man. And the same thing on this end, he asks me for help, and I'm always there for him. So we got a little gift for you. I wanted to show, now that we know what we're talking about here, some of the, some of the things that we've been doing with them, but, you go ahead. So they've been, a lot of our buildings sustained a lot of damage in storms, water infiltration, water leaks, soffit damage, stuff like that. So they've been doing work around the city. That is...
Lift Station 4.
Lift Station 4? All right, help me out here, man. And they did a facelift on Lift Station 4. For instance, these are just examples, I don't want to bore anybody. All right, go ahead. And is that, what's that?
That's actually the skate park.
That's the skate park, right?
Lift Station 1. They actually, it's kind of incredible because they actually have did a lot more in actually what's on film right here, just some of the things that I did. They actually did, completely did the administration building, painted that whole building.
That's it? Yeah, we're coming up.
So...
That's the restrooms at the pool that were devastated. Go ahead, Adrian. That's the, the spray farm at the pool. And then I think we've got, yeah, so on the upper right, that's the administration building. And on the bottom left. Also, they've done in the past, doing crossovers that got destroyed in storms, and extensive works in the past, all kinds of projects with the channel markers. I remember one project where, remember that, Steve? They, the guys came out, I estimated three months to do the project.
Right, right.
They were literally done in two weeks, so I'm saying, guys, you gotta slow down here. We gotta keep you busy for a little bit.
I did.
There's some other stuff that we have on the horizon that our fire department was really, really hurt bad in storms. The canopies came down, and so they're gonna help us out with that too. So, yeah, I think that's, that's it. I think you gotta kind of get the idea. And I, I have a special award for you guys, appreciation, and I wanna give this to you. Actually, I need this for you guys. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Good job, man.
I just wanted to say, for me, I just wanna thank the heads of all the other departments, Public Works, Water Red, Stormwater, they just, they give us, you know, we work together as a team, so they actually give us that flexibility to do what we need to do, give me that flexibility to do what I need to do, and I wanna appreciate, I thank, I really thank you guys because we've been able to get a lot of stuff done that was kind of on the burn, so thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I think I'm creating a monster here, buddy.
Hey, thank you, thank you, Donald. It's amazing to hear that. I love to hear that. You know, step up to the plate and just do what you gotta do. We, we need people like you. Thank you. All right. Can I get approval of the agenda?
We'll approve the agenda as documented.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, 5-0. We've got a public comment from Ryan McDuffie? I think that's correct. Now please state your name and address, and it's three minutes.
No worries. Brian McDuffie. Address is actually 1125 South Atlantic Avenue over at the Beach Island Resort. I'm actually with RLL Real Estate Group, I represent Beach Island Resort, but I'm just here tonight to follow up on the contract that we were going back and forth with for the parking passes. I know we got it back, and then there was a change that was made in regards to, we thought we were getting 24-hour passes for the 11th Avenue toward the end, and the verbiage was changed at the last minute, right before the signatures, and it just says that it's, we're allowed overnight parking from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m., but it does not include 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So we still, so we're coming back asking to have the full 24 hours that we had before. And again, the money part is not an issue for us, we don't mind paying for the passes.
I think overnight parking from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m. is more than overnight parking, and I'll support it as it's been given to them.
From what I understand, they do, they are paying a decent sum to, for a parking lot that probably wouldn't normally be used that much, other than because of their, because of their, where their place is. So it is something that I wouldn't mind if you guys want to discuss about that.
Well, I'll discuss that 11th Street is one of the, and you could talk to the parking enforcement officers, that's one of the busiest places that people park to go to the beach, whether they're surfing or what they're doing. I mean, if you go, if you're coming from Patrick at 10 o'clock in the morning, and you start passing stubbed-in streets, that one will have as many, if not more, cars than any other street, so.
I know we had mentioned the last time that we may make an agenda item to kind of look at the policy of downtown versus out of downtown. Do we want to make this part of that agenda item?
Yeah.
Just for further...
The, the issue for us was, is that when this resort was built in 1960, the property only comes with 11 parking spots, and there's 20, there's 20 rooms, one of them being a handicap. So the resort, over the years, has never had any issues with being allowed to, but obviously in the last 20 years, or however long it's been, when the city started, you know, charging for parking and things like that, it actually puts, if we're at full capacity, six guests are forced to park on 11th that are here for a week to a month, and now they're running the rest of getting tickets, you know, and we don't have any control, it's just, it's always been, you know, 18 rooms since the 1960s.
Do you currently pay about $2,400 a year?
Yes, sir.
$2,800? So are they, is, are they charging 28 for just overnight parking now?
Yeah, now it's, now we're getting charged just for the overnight, it's not the full 24 hours anymore.
I don't think the original agreement was for 24 hours, it was overnight parking. And now they're trying to stretch it to 24/7.
I'd be interested to see what our actual parking revenue is for that street per year, and maybe try to look into a little bit more, but...
I mean, now you're talking details of the policy though, right? I mean, we gotta come up with a threshold, it's not just revenue-driven, it's location and outside.
I think, I mean, if you guys want, I wouldn't mind diving into this a little bit deeper, and like you said...
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to...
As far as right now, I don't think there's much that we can do for you, but this is something that we'll, we'll look into for you.
Okay. No, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
All right.
Just for, just for the record, for the man that was just up here, I supported wholeheartedly when you came up the last time, and I said, yeah, let's do it, overnight parking. Well, that's not what we got, we got 24/7 parking, so that's why I'm not supporting any of this stuff.
I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, that was it. Staff reports and announcements.
Okay, so I've got two things this evening. The first thing was, I wanted to recognize Brad Calso for a $15 million grant that, that he just got in conjunction with Mead and Hunt. It's a little bit complicated, but basically, it's an SRF loan that has a principal forgiveness clause at the end, and it's for $15 million. It's been explained to me how it works three times already, and if you want details on it, Brad? You guys want a little bit more details on how it works?
What's the scope for, or with the project? I may, I'd be curious on that.
It's, it's basically a loan that doesn't have to be...
It has a principal forgiveness clause, Brad.
It's kind of confusing, but okay.
So, back on December 29th, 2022, the president signed a Consolidated Appropriations Act that gave the right to the Environmental Protection Agency to distribute funds to states for disaster relief. State of Florida got $317 million of that. So the EPA is running that money through DEP's Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Program. So we have to follow the loan program guidelines, but there's no payback, it's technically a grant. And we got, we got $15 million of that, 300...
Project?
So the project is mainly gonna focus on inflow and infiltration for the sanitary sewers, the sanitary laterals, the manholes, anything that we can tie to inflow and infiltration back to disaster relief recovery, to prevent sanitary sewer overflows, lift station backups, and all that stuff.
So we were already baseline to do this work, and this is just the funding?
I did have some engineering and design for some of these projects in this budget, and now I get to kind of play around with them a little bit and defer them. It's gonna be over a five-year period. In order to be eligible for State Revolving Fund, you have to put a facility plan together every five years. We're in the process of doing that now, which will highlight all of these projects. And then the loan application is actually not due until August, so we'll be bringing this back to you guys probably in November, once we get the agreement in place. And that'll list all the projects that are eligible for the 15 million.
So you're saying for a loan, we don't actually have to make any principal interest payments, period?
The state is not required to pay back EPA, therefore, we're not required to pay back to state.
Okay. Very cool.
Yeah, Brad, thank you.
Good work.
That's $15 million, that's terrific.
I just feel like the D is just came up in a cloud, like...
I can't use it for City Hall, though, so...
Unless the City Hall is floating. Then...
All right.
Okay, so I've got one more thing.
Okay.
So I'm gonna bring something forward to you for discussion and for direction, and we were approached by a company that wants to operate a pedicab company, and they've asked for a BTR. And before, without further ado, they're here, they have a little slide presentation, they can give you a little, they have five minutes to give you an idea of what they have in mind as far as a pedicab business, and then we can talk about it. Guys, come on up.
I apologize, I meant he was supposed to be here with me, but his girlfriend and his mother were on the way here from Vieira and had a flat, so he's on the side of the road helping them, so I'm solo here. But my name is William Black, I live at 331 South Brevard Avenue, and if you'll bear with my nervousness, I'm not much of a public speaker, but I wanna go through this presentation now. Our mission statement, at Space Coast Pedicabs, we're not just in the business of transportation, we're in the business of creating personal memories. We're dedicated to taking Cocoa Beach further and farther by providing safe, eco-friendly, and open-air transportation throughout our tourist and downtown areas. Our pedal-powered carriages are more than just a ride, they're an experience. Driven by fit, friendly, and knowledgeable locals, our pedicabs will play an integral part in connecting people and places locally. We believe in the power of experiences, and we're committed to providing unforgettable ones for both our riders and the community as a whole. This presentation's agenda, we're gonna go over the vehicle safety details for the pedicabs, the proposed road usage details, the proposed serviced area routes, the local economic impact, and then of course, our closing statement. The vehicle safety details, with safety being our number one priority, our pedicabs will meet all the requirements for safety, very similar to those of our local street legal golf carts. Our pedicabs are fully equipped with lighting that can be seen 360 around the vehicle, seat belts and handrails, strong braking systems, and an electric motor capable of reach and speed speeds of 20 miles per hour. Our bikes are more than capable of providing safety to every rider. Our proposed road usage details, primarily, we would prefer to utilize designated bike lanes when available. When bike lanes are not available, however, our secondary proposed route would involve sidewalk usage, but only within approved areas. Please note the proposed sidewalk usage guidelines provided in this slide. And hopefully, we can go over those here in a minute, I'm just trying to get the five minutes in. Most of these, and finally, if neither are available, our final proposed route would be roadways in approved designated areas. Most of these roadways already have reduced speed limits of 25 miles per hour due to their location. With our cabs' ability to reach 20 miles per hour, there should be no real traffic impediments as a result. Again, it would be very similar to the golf carts frequently seen on the roads. Our proposed service area routes is primarily the tourist destination from the end of Ocean Beach Boulevard up just past the pier. That's the Cocoa Beach portion. I've been in detailed conversations with the city of Cape Canaveral, and we can get into that after the presentation, but they have already approved usage in their city, and again, hopefully, we can discuss some of that here in a minute. But this portion is within Cocoa Beach, and it is primarily the tourist zone, if you will. So this is our first proposed service area route. We came up with the second route here because we want to live just right off of South Brevard Avenue here, and as many events from surfing Santas to, to festivals, to 5K runs, to all kinds of events, where this portion of the city gets inundated with lots of traffic, vehicle traffic in particular, that has to spread as far down as 11th and Past, maybe just for events, we would like to utilize Cocoa Beach downtown, just this area here, maybe not for a regular basis, but for the events the city has. Get past this. I wanna go over a little bit of the local economic impacts for the, that the pedicabs will make. Obviously, it's an additional source of tax revenue for Cocoa Beach. It will be a reduction in traffic and parking issues, hopefully. Reduced emissions will benefit the environment and provide a better air quality, reduce fuel consumption, these vehicles do not operate, are not gas-powered operated, reduce noise pollution, convenience and service, and this is especially for individuals such as elderly, pregnant women, and those with physical limitations or disabilities that can't move around the city as easy. Affordability and expediency, cheaper than vehicle transportation, and the ability to navigate through roadways and alleys. And particularly over in Coconut's areas, what, what we were thinking with this right here, back behind, well, throughout the whole place, really, but behind Coconut's. It will provide a source of employment, and that's the ability for us to provide our families. You know, the gentleman before was talking about the employment. And also, safe transportation for those unfamiliar with the area, there's a whole lot of that. And then reduced traffic accidents, improved traffic flow. Our closing statement here is, pedicab service is not only a helpful form of transportation, it's also an enjoyable experience. Pedicabs are a fun and efficient way to travel. Pedicabs save time, money, and help to protect the environment. Cocoa Beach is a unique, one-of-a-kind community that would significantly benefit from a pedicab experience. And that's our, that's the presentation.
I wouldn't mind discussing this a little bit, if you guys... Go ahead.
So, first of all, he said the vehicle safety details were similar to street legal golf carts, but these are not street legal. They're not, you know, don't have license plates like the street legal golf carts do. He said they'll operate within designated bike lanes. Our bike lanes are three foot, and the pedicab is four foot, so it doesn't fit even in the bike lanes that we have on A1A. And then, you know, on the sidewalks, we have a lot of sidewalks that are only four feet wide, so that means they're gonna be like narrowly trying to stay on the sidewalk, and where they're gonna go if somebody says that they're gonna yield to pedestrians, and I guess they're gonna drive off the curb and whatever. So then roadway usage, you know, permitted to operate on all roadways within approved routes, that's not legal, because they're not street legal vehicles. And when he says that Cape Canaveral has approved them, well, if you've been up in Cape Canaveral in Ridgewood, the sidewalks are wider than this table, they're like, you know, eight, 10 feet wide, you know, the ones they put in. So that, that could be a good fit, and you got room to pass people and all that. And then again, there's the liability, and you know, the speeds and using them on the roadways, I would see it as creating more congestion than it's gonna relieve congestion. So I'm a no vote. So I'm a no vote.
Before you, before you rebut, because I'm gonna speak on your behalf for this. Where he proposed, there is a bike lane, and it is probably at least five feet wide on the side of the road.
The north one, not the south one.
The north. Right now, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna discuss his primary route, which is all he wanted. There is a bike lane, it is a 25 mile an hour zone. It is a bicycle, he's not required to have any of the safety stuff. And I think, I would be open to a pilot program, six months, wherever in the route, the initial route that you're talking about, to see how it works, to see if we do have any complaints, to see, you know, how it works. I think, see how that goes for six months, if we don't get complaints, if nobody gets hurt, if it seems alright. Obviously, the insure, you'd have to have insurance, and in Cocoa Beach, we'd have to be additionally insured or whatever, that has to be. But I think from there, we could see if, if something would, if it's safe enough to look further. But he brings up points for some of the locations that were not listed in your thing as far as with smaller things.
Ask what the initial route, is it the north?
It was Ocean Beach Boulevard. So, I mean, it's not a really heavily traveled road.
There's hotels up there.
Oh, that road, it's not heavily traveled? That road gets backed up for blocks.
Well, no, but that has the, that has the wide sidewalk.
Yeah, wide sidewalks.
I don't remember if it was a draft version I saw or another version, but I was, I would endorse the north version. You can link together with the Canaveral, you can get to a few of the hotels. I don't think downtown, yeah.
I think it does add an aspect of cool tourist activity for Cocoa Beach, in that location.
Sandbar.
I think in that location specifically, I would be okay, start off with a pilot program if you guys wanted.
I would like to get the chief Mullins' input on it, just.
I mean, yeah, let's.
Can I also respond a bit? He had a long list, so I'm gonna try to recall what I can. But the first one being the same requirements as the vehicle, the only requirement that we don't have that doesn't meet the vehicle is a license plate. And if that is required, by all means, I will have that sucker inspected, and license plate's a no problem. But it's got the blinkers, it's got the rear lights, it's got the hydraulic brakes, it's got everything that is required, the horn, you name it. I apologize, but the features are here. It's got everything that would be required as a vehicle, and if the license plate was the only other requirement, I have no problem meeting that requirement. I believe the second concern you said was the bike lanes are only three feet wide. And the proposed areas, which is just the specific segment from Ocean Beach Boulevard where it ends just up to the pier, they have the oversized bike lanes. Those are very.
But not, not in the downtown.
Not in the downtown. That conversation, yes, I understand that in consideration for Cocoa Beach downtown, that would be a whole different conversation, I would imagine. But if we limit it specifically to the tourist area along Ridgewood where it turns into Ocean Beach Boulevard, there is a very significant bike lane that runs the span of the whole thing until it gets to Cape Canaveral. And they've just recently expanded their sidewalks and real proud of the width and all of that, so it would run perfectly together. As far as the traffic, the 25 mile an hour reduced speed limit there, these, I brought the pedicab, I brought my family in tonight. So if you guys want to see what it looks like, how it operates, what it, you know, what it consists of, it's right outside in the front. But it fits perfectly within those, it's not four feet wide, it fits perfectly within those.
It is four feet wide, I measured it.
Did you already?
Yes.
Outside, you seen it?
Yes.
From the out, outer base to the outer base?
The wheels, the wheels on the back.
Okay. Well, we wrote it on.
I think it's a little bit over four feet, by the way.
Okay.
Regardless, were you proposed?
We wrote it pretty much on most of all the roadways, not for business use at all, but just for us as a family. And the only issues that we have ever had, even on the sidewalk coming down here, because that's where we're gonna come back on the way, is on the sidewalk. The proposed guidelines I have here for the sidewalk usage, when there are pedicabs on the sidewalk, bottom line, I propose, now, this is the part that I feel like a good discussion would help, you know, find appropriate solution. But period, not to exceed 15 miles per hour on any sidewalk anywhere. Not only not to exceed 15 miles per hour, but anytime you're within 100 feet of a pedestrian, you immediately reduce your speed to a max speed of seven miles per hour. Which I, Mr. Carrigan knows, we spoke on it a little bit, but that's about my jogging pace, it's not much faster than a jog. And when pedicabs are on the sidewalks, they yield to all traffic, period. It doesn't matter if it's a one-wheel, another e-bike, a pedestrian, a lady walking her dogs, we yield to all traffic. And if that means to scoot off, that's perfectly fine for us. We're not in a hurry. This is an experience. It's not meant to, let's jet you here and jet you here.
Just to interject, though, this, that, this point is mute, because where you're proposing, and we're proposing to do possibly a pilot, you're on, you're on the side of the road with a bike path that's about five to six feet wide, so.
Gotcha.
So, but to get my support even for the pilot program would be, no sidewalk usage on, just on north end of town for the pilot program.
Yeah.
No sidewalk usage.
Yeah.
Okay, because there's not enough room on those sidewalks. And no roadway usage, because we already have traffic congestion on Ocean Beach Boulevard.
Yeah, he doesn't need any of that.
Right.
All he needs is that bike path.
If it's just the bike lanes, then what, where's he gonna, you're just gonna stop and drop people off in the bike lane?
Mainly Cocoa Beach Pier, Sandbar area, the parking lots that access there, most people aren't getting off in the middle of the road. Never experienced that, and if they are, then we just pull off to the Cocoa Beach Pier. This is the target zone, there, Ron John's, all that stuff.
Have you talked to the people at the pier?
Have not, no, sir. Well, I don't plan on going in their property and, you know, doing all that type of stuff. There's a roadway that comes right off down there.
We vacated that roadway to the pier.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, if, if we need to go across the street to the Best Western or something and then cross the road themselves, that's fine. I think, again, it's not so much about getting them exactly to where they need and picking them up right there in the middle of the road. It's, you know, destination stop points. Like I said, if we can't access the Cocoa Beach Pier or even the road that goes into it, then, you know, we fish camp or.
Now, I don't know that if we did this pilot program, that we could limit it to only allowing you to do that, is that right? We would probably have to allow, open it to other people as well for that time being, or?
I think it would be difficult to just have one company.
So we, we would, if we did.
Restricted to one company.
Yeah, we would have to have it available to others if they wanted to as well, for the, at least for the pilot program. But, I mean, I'm okay with giving it a shot, but I'd like to hear from Wes as well.
And possibly Randy if we need to.
Okay.
Yeah, Wes Mullins Police Chief. Good evening. So this is interesting. I'm all for businesses. We would have a hard time enforcing any of these sidewalk usage regulations, frankly, because they're not really law, as far as, you know, exceeding 15 miles an hour on sidewalks or not exceeding seven miles an hour when within 100 feet of pedestrians. We can't really enforce that. That's not in our Florida State statutes for us to actually enforce. That would just be kind of our rule that we try to follow. I agree that if we're going to do it, or at least for a pilot program, I do think it's a busy roadway. The bike lane would be the way to go, only on the north end. And I would certainly discourage sidewalks, and I would discourage roadway. I would only use bike lanes, if it were me.
Yeah, I think, I think that sounds completely reasonable. I mean, no sidewalks.
And I talked with Bob here a few minutes ago, and he says those bike lanes may be five feet up there, so I don't, I don't know if, you know, if that's true. He would know better than I do, but if that's the case, I would, you know, I would side with, you know, with Commissioner Williams, that I would discourage roadways and sidewalks because of e-bikes and everything else. That's my view.
Thank you. And Randy, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, we've, we've looked at it up there, and I think it would be tight, but I think if you have a pilot program, we could probably work with it. We're also in discussions with Cape Canaveral, their planning staff up there. Matter of fact, they're either watching, they were gonna be here tonight if something happened, they're probably watching. We're gonna have a conversation with them tomorrow, so we can tie these two things together, depending upon how we decide to move forward. But again, we have most of the concerns that you've already mentioned here tonight. But we can, if you want to do a pilot program, we think we can work with it.
Okay. I would be open to that if you guys would be, it's only in that section, only with the bike lanes.
I have a question for the owner.
Yeah.
Was there any stipulations from the Canaveral side of what we're discussing from the gentleman?
No, as a matter of fact, when I first read history, I don't want to take up too much time here, but we initially went to Cape Canaveral to file for the business license for the BTR. But we live in Cocoa Beach, so they said, you've got to do that there. So I didn't even realize that we were in the wrong. You know, we wanted to operate there before the season, which, you know, even ties into the port, which is totally different. But they said we were in the wrong place. They directed us to go over to the sheriff's office. We went over there, and we told them what was going on. They loved it. They said, hey, that's great, you know, even come have coffee, coffee with the cop. Went to the meetings, all these things. I had kept in contact with them as I moved over to Cocoa Beach, got ahold of Mr. Stevenson, and we, you know, since then started discussing, Mr. Carrigino's been involved. But the last correspondence with Kyle Harris, who's the senior planner over in Cape Canaveral, he was, Friday, he had asked for Mr. Stevenson's number and email address so that he could contact him directly. And I, and I had asked him, because originally, they were going to write up a letter that says, hey, we're on board, everything's okay. And so Mr. Harris had got ahold of Mr. Stevenson, and their correspondence should be, you know, about what he said, getting congruent on it all.
I would think your only, the only weird spot of this whole thing is Avon by the sea, because obviously, they got probably three-foot-wide sections on the side of the road over there. I travel the side of the road a lot on my electric scooter, so I know exactly all these spots. But I think you would have to have an agreement with, with the county for that section, but I'm not positive. But as far as we go, you know, we have the room for you, I think, on the side. So if you guys want to do that, I would be open to it.
So I think you did a nice job with the presentation, so thank you for that. If, if the city were to open up a six-month pilot, what are the, what are the benefits? What are the observables we should be looking for to say, yes, this pilot proved that this makes sense, right? And what would be those things that you would say, you know what, if you didn't realize this, or you saw these things, then I was wrong, and the city shouldn't continue after the pilot?
Sure. That goes back to what the mayor said as far as the pilot programming regarding complaints and stuff. Obviously, it's gonna be our number-one priority to keep that down to as little as possible. I understand that there are people that wake up mad at the world, regardless of whether you're driving a bike, a car, any of those things. But with regard to our interaction, so to speak, usage of the roadways and whatnot, I don't think we're gonna, I know we're not gonna create problems, at least intentionally. I wish my nephew was here too, because he's a really good kid, solid kid. And it's just us, it is, it's just us. It's not like we're gonna go tomorrow and hire 14 people. We don't have that. This is, like you said, it's a pilot, see if it works or not. But the number-one would be to make sure we don't inundate the city with complaints about our operation. And then, secondly, I would suggest that we get very proactive about collecting compliments, if you will, or positive comments from the community, from the tourists, from the people that we are interacting with, whether that's a, hey, review this here, or send a message to City Hall there, whatever the case it may be. And then in six months, if, if we have a six-month sample of that data, complaints versus, you know, positive reviews, things like that, I feel like the city and primarily the tourists down there, be honest, it's not a lot of locals in those areas utilizing this service. It's primarily tourist locals. We have our free parking, we park on the, you know. But for these folks, six months to gather that data, do our best to show that it works and that there are no problems and that we have improved. I understand that there is traffic, there's on every motor court in the city, it's an island, there's gonna be traffic. But I don't think that the traffic, and particularly on that right, right there, is heavy to the point or even overly saturated compared to some of the other cities in Cocoa Beach, where 25 mile an hour zones with multiple stop signs is really an issue. Like I said, this pedicab out here is capable of doing, we set it at 20, but it's capable of doing it more. And we're not trying to even go 20 with these things. We're trying to make the experience more enjoyable and stay around the 12 to 15 mile an hour range. But again, on that motor court there, I think that we eliminate any issues with, with the locals. And, you know, honestly, in this situation here, I would need a little more time. I can plan and prepare very well. But trying to come up with these things right here is.
I think, I think you're good. I think you've got. One more thing we forgot real quick, for the pilot program, would you guys want to limit it to like three, like three companies? So that it's not like a.
Is there anybody asking to do it besides him?
No, but I'm just saying, like, to be, to be, because you can't create a monopoly, right? So we would probably want to put a limit.
Like beach vendors, we don't want there, you know, you let one in and now you could have 100.
You know, I, you know, this, this actually brings another question to me, because I think I've been seeing, I'm up that way three or four times a week, and I think I've been seeing a couple of different people renting, like they have golf carts that say, rent me on it. And they're picking up people and giving them rides. And I was, I was gonna bring that up to Wayne. And it's kind of like what they're doing with golf carts, and I think, I haven't seen it continuously, but I think we gotta watch out for that. And then that's what they're, if we find somebody doing that, to have them, I don't know if that's the same thing, golf carts versus.
I don't know. It's all new for us, we're trying to figure it out.
But I, 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 I don't know, I don't necessarily, necessarily see a limit to the pilot program if nobody else is really. I maybe just approve them as they go.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think, I'm, one, just principally, I tend to side with what Commissioner Williams is thinking in terms of concerns, anticipated concerns. But I think pilot programs are a really smart way to say, here are my concerns, let's test it. We're not committed to six months. If we see an issue that arises that was, that would have prevented us from having the pilot, we can cut it at any time. And then just have that reviewed by Becky and make sure that we're not gonna violate anything in doing that, but I like the idea of it.
Okay.
What are the hours? What are the hours you plan to offer?
In that area, it's particularly daytime. If we were to ever utilize downtown Cocoa Beach for events, things of that nature, it might be, you know, after hours, but we live right around the corner there. But we're not talking about that, so the hours here would pretty much be sundown. Nine o'clock, obviously, in the summer months, you know, or when the sun sets a little later. But from eight o'clock on, when the tourists are out carrying their luggages and their beach chairs and their coolers and their kids and everything they got, I'm gonna put a, fabricate a platform on the back of the pedicab that lays down and will help carry, help carry the coolers and the chairs and the things of that nature, secure it, obviously. But I also want to go back just briefly. Mr. Carrigino and Mr. Stevenson did a great job. I was actually blown away by how much research they had did before I even come, came to the place with the presentation. And part of it, their research was getting ahold of other similar beachside, beach cities that had this already in place, some of the guidelines for usage. And with regards to the multiple companies, some of the language in those municipalities did have it limited to a couple of companies, things of that nature, because they did not want to, like Mr. Williams said, they don't want to create more traffic issues. By now, we've got a train of pedicabs running up and down here. My initial response was, hey, my nephew and I, we love this. This is perfect. And if we get out there and nobody likes it but us, then it was just a great idea that we thought was a great idea, nobody else cared. But if the demand is so great that, man, those are the coolest things, gosh, it sure helps our, it made our vacation much better, blah, 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 and the demand was to drive more business, I was open for that. But then after I got ahold of some of the language, I realized it's not a good idea to open it up to everybody, because it could very well create the problems that Mr. Williams was talking about.
What other hypothetical? So I've been up there on the bike and seen people on the bike paths and on my bike. And, you know, sometimes you have, like, parents, adults with kids on little bikes, okay? So hypothetically, if you come up. with kids on little bikes, okay? So hypothetically, if you come up behind them, and they're going five miles an hour, do you just go out in the roadway and go by them? That you're not allowed to do, because you're supposed to stay in the bike path? And if they're coming head-on toward you, who yields? Do they end up having to go out in the roadway to go around you?
No, I propose that we always yield. We're the bigger, we're the bigger vehicle. It's easier for us to take it slower and allow these people...
Yeah, but if it's five-foot wide in your forefoot, and you got two adults and two little kids, maybe with training wheels, you know, coming, coming toward you, or you're gonna try to pass them?
There's a, you gotta block every, every block. You can say, hey, coming up behind you, as soon as we get to this block, you mind if I pass? I mean, it's not like you're in a car driving past. He can, he can...
Everybody's not a...
This is the kind of thing you can learn about in the pilot program.
Mind you, we're not in a hurry here. We're not trying to race past folks. If there is a kiddo, I got my seven-year-old right here, she rides fairly slow. If we were to come behind that, we're not in a hurry to pass. And on Ocean Beach Boulevard, yes, there's local traffic there, because there are homes that are owned by locals, but it's primarily tourists. And if they're riding bicycles, it's the bicycles they're renting from Ron Johns. Most of them aren't families in the Cocoa Beach area and in Cape Canaveral that are spending a lot of their time riding up and down that motor cord. That's primarily tourist stuff, which is why we've selected that, which is why that makes the most sense. But we're not trying to run anybody off the road. If we're all moving the same way, because there's bike lanes going this way and that way, if we're moving that way with the right of traffic, and somebody's coming opposing that on our lane, in that case, I think it makes sense, we yield, as I've suggested. But that they do the roundabout, because they're coming opposing traffic anyway.
Wrap it up. It's getting long.
Yeah, but now you just, he just said that somebody's gonna end up having to go out in the roadway, either them or the other people.
It's a pilot program.
I'll do this out during the pilot program.
Randy, it looks like you wanted to say one more thing?
I, I did. If, if, Mr. Mayor of the Commission, thank you. If the Commission looks to move forward with the pilot program, I would humbly request that we limit it to one company right now, so we can assess what the, what the, first of all, what the demand is. And it's better if we have problems, and we can work out with one company rather than three companies.
So at this point, this isn't a decisional agenda item. You're looking for direction, and you're gonna go type the Cape Canaveral, and you're gonna come back to us with, this is either makes sense or doesn't make sense. And if it makes sense, this is how we need to do it. And if it's one company, two companies, however, however you work it out, you'll bring it back to us.
That's correct. We're not reinventing the wheel. As Mr. Black said, we, we have a lot of data, but there are always different circumstances. Different cities have different circumstances, and certainly we're unique and are on our own rights. So we have to write something and put something in place that makes sense for Cocoa Beach if we want to do that. And right now, just dealing with one company on a pilot program is, is my, in my opinion, the best way to do it.
I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make sure that legally, we weren't, we weren't gonna put ourselves in like a monopoly-type problem.
No, for, for the pilot program, I don't have a problem with it. I'd have to research, you know, if, if, if the permanent one was limited to one, I think there would be a problem with that.
Okay. Okay. I would be okay with a single pilot program if you guys are, so then will we just...
I had another question for Randy, actually. Randy, can I ask you something?
Of course.
So if this is successful after the pilot program, are we gonna have to make, like a, like we do with the kayak tours, like, a limited amount of vendors and license, like, only so many licenses are given? Are we gonna have to...
Yeah, I mean, this is going to need to be done. We can do the pilot program with just a resolution, but ultimately, if we're going to be continuing this, we're gonna need an ordinance. And if we want to be able to enforce violations of whatever restrictions we have in the pilot program, we're gonna need to do it by ordinance, because you can't have ordinance violations based on a resolution. So...
So, okay, well, I...
Well, we'll figure out how to get it done for y'all.
Okay.
But, yeah.
All right. So, thank you.
I must say, I, I just want to inform you all that we will have cameras mounted on the bike. So any and all times we're operating for business, you will have recorded video of whatever interaction. So should somebody complain, whether, you know, it's about us or anything else, we'll have at least our objective version of what is. And then you can say, well, these guys had a legit complaint, or they were just, you know, not, not happy, or...
That's very wise. Okay, thank you. I think we've spent enough time on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Sounds good. All right. Any other public comment?
We're already past vote.
Oh, yeah, we did that. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, this was, sorry about that. That was, I got confused. Okay. That was...
That was my staff report.
Staff report. All right. City attorney?
Um, nothing tonight, thank you.
All right. City commission, any reports or...
For the sake of time, I'll pass.
Okay.
Don't forget to change your clocks.
Okay.
See what you did there. Very nice.
All right. So, nobody else?
I have some comments, but it's contingent on if it gets screwed up. So I would like to hear from you first, and then...
So, this past week, there was a, there was a commission workshop, and Tobias had, had brought up some, some false information, and they, they came up with an impromptu vote, basically, without even having public comment about the situation with the lifeguards. When I saw that, I asked our city manager if we had, in fact, sent our agreement out yet. He said he had not. And I said, hold off, please. With this new evidence, I would like to present it to the commission, because I know, Josh, you were on the fence a little bit. I mean, you could tell, took you a few seconds. So I think with this new evidence that had popped up, I thought it was only fair that we maybe revisit our vote and see if we both, we all feel the same after seeing. I've got a slideshow or a, a presentation, basically, of, of some of the stuff that was said. So I'd like to bring that up, and then I'll discuss a little further.
So...
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Per the...
Hang on.
Pause, please.
Pause for a second.
Fourteen, fourteen.
So, per commission policy and normal order of business, you would need to ask for a vote to revisit the item?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that. But this is my pub, this is my public, this is my public comment.
This is your staff report?
Yeah.
Commission report.
Okay. So you're not gonna do that tonight?
I will later, possibly.
But it's not an agenda item, and it was an agenda item when we approved it.
I don't know. I, I spoke with the city attorney, and she said...
You can revisit something that we previously voted on at the following meeting. But you have to make a motion to revisit it. You have to get a second, and you have to get a, a, you know, a majority vote.
I, I believe what he's doing is doing his city commission report.
Yeah, I'm doing my report, and I'll do that later if, if we want to vote on it. I'll, I'll ask that we have a, a motion to revote and see if there's a second, and then we could do a revote. So if you wouldn't mind rewinding that, and then we'll play it from the beginning again?
But does anybody know how many people died out there, fourteen, I guess, fourteen, fourteen? Were, were they all, were they, how many were there lifeguards in the present? Zero. Zero. No lifeguard. So they died after lifeguard, is that what you're saying, fourteen? Okay. Okay, so fourteen died. Now, out of that fourteen, were there any at Cocoa Beach that had lifeguards that died? I don't know. The, the, Mr. Chico, before we got back, it was pretty telling that there wasn't one death where a lifeguard was present. Correct. That was extremely telling, that the lifeguards were working hard, were, were very effective. Obviously, lifeguards can't work at midnight. Correct. And when they were working, in the areas in which they were working, they were highly effective. There was not one death. My only concern is, is what do they do, what do we do if they say that? And most of the people that have called me in regards to this have indicated to me very clearly that we are the ones through the tourist tax that are bringing the visitors to the beach, and we are the ones that should be paid for. So all these people, I mean, that's what a couple of mayors have said to me, and I didn't want to get into arguments with them, but, but to a certain extent, that's true. Because of the tourist development tax, because of us advertising that we have great beaches, we are bringing a variety of people to the beach. So the question then is, is if we're bringing them to the beach, why aren't we paying for them? That's what their question is. It's not mine. I'm just seeing what I've, I've talked to people about. So I don't know what's gonna happen in the event that they all say, no. I think we're probably pretty close to the vote now. But here's my prediction. I'm gonna support this motion today, but here's my prediction. None of them are going to do this, and we're gonna be right back where we started. So I'm willing to try, but it ain't gonna work. So, there's a motion on the floor?
Okay, actually, I'll talk a little bit, and then we'll go back, we'll go into the slideshow. So Tobias, straight up, whether he was misinformed, or he was lying to, to push a narrative, I don't know. But we definitely had a drowning December 23rd with a lifeguard present. That's not to say that they don't save lives, they do. But obviously, something, something he was trying to push is that we need lifeguards and they're safe. And I agree. But he's misrepresenting. Another thing he did in that meeting was, he basically indicated that we, we get $3.7 million in parking revenue. We're being stingy with it. We don't want to, we don't want to share it with, with them for lifeguards. As was stated, if they want to advertise all the way from New York to Cocoa Beach, come swim to Cocoa Beach, we have lifeguards, they're the ones that are responsible for taking care of the people they're bringing here. They're talking about us wasting $7,000 on cartoon pictures. That's not the case. He didn't talk to us first. He didn't give us the opportunity to even show up to that meeting. He didn't let us know they're having that meeting. He had a meeting, impromptu, with slideshows and everything else. If we would have known, we would have been there. We would have rebutted everything he said, and it would have been different. Not only that, there was public comment that filled out a card, and they ignored it. They didn't allow any public comment during that. That $7,000 that he's making a, a big deal about was pulled from the budget. That was, that was from last manager that wanted to have caricatures drawn. Us as commission, we're more fiscally responsible. We don't want it. When, when Wayne got ahold of it, we expressed our concerns, he pulled that from the budget. That's not there. The $200,000 for the, for the, they said, oh, 200,000 for the skate park. That right there is a safety issue. That's not because we're trying to build toys with, rather than take care of people on the beach. That is a safety issue. If that skate park is not fixed, somebody actually could die because of a result of it. That coping is dangerous. That skate park can be dangerous. If we don't take care of our assets, they create a liability. And that's what that is. It's not a slush fund. That's, that's stuff that we have to take care of for our residents. That $3.7 million goes to fixing crosswalks. It goes to fire and, and safety, and beach rangers, and beach cleanup, and, and parking garages, and parking enforcement. We, we need that money to take care of our stuff, to take care of our residents. Now, I've got Wyatt here. He's got a public comment. He was there the day of that drowning, and I was wondering if he could come up and, and just say something a little bit about his experience with that.
Thank you, Mayor, commissioners, city manager, staff. I'd like, I'd like to address that at some point at this, if you guys provide me the time, but I have three minutes. I prepared, I prepared a statement that I worked on really hard, because I want to be careful. This is troubling to me, because I fought this battle with the county when I was lifeguard chief to get more lifeguards, and I cannot believe the state of the lifeguards we're in now, and we're battling over more lifeguards. Lifeguards are crucial. My statement here, this is how I see it. And I'd like to break it down into an analogy. The county has a boat, and it's a fine boat. They're asking $800,000 for this boat. The problem is, the commissioners, the county, the public safety director, and the fire chief are ill-informed. There's issues with this boat. So let's review some of the issues. Funding, recognition and retention of lifeguards. Most importantly, operational management. We'll get to that one last. But at this moment, funding is top of the list. And the reason for that is because it's a boat. They have to throw money into it, right? And they're trying to find that funding. They're looking at you. A underlying issue is that lifeguards don't get the same respect that fire police and EMS have. A clear example is if we had more crime, and we had a lot of fires, and we had medical calls, funding would not be an issue. Ocean Rescue should be considered an equal to EMS public safety operations, especially with us inviting these tourists to come to our beautiful beaches. We're not providing them the, I guess, expected protection in America. There's a reasonable expectation we're protected. Ocean Rescue lifeguards should be career-minded professional lifeguards, not part-time teenagers, college kids. They should have the same benefits as fire police and EMS. We would retain them. They would give them a career path forward. Right now, they're leaving the lifeguards to become firefighters, police officers in the military. And finally, the not-so-obvious problem is the direct supervision and management of the operations. Let's use December 31st as an example. False information here. Lifeguards weren't doing their job. There's a chance of drowning in front of a lifeguard, one in 18 million. We were one that day in front of lifeguards. There's a video out there. If you guys haven't heard about it, it shows exactly what went down. I've observed the county ocean rescue operations over the years since my retirement. Under the current rescue chief, they are not operating at the USLA, United States Life Saving Association standards. Of course, the lifeguards do respond, and they're doing a great job rescuing and saving some people from here and there. But currently, Bevarre County Ocean Rescue has just been responding. Our charge as lifeguards is more than that. Can I have more?
Yeah, keep going.
Our charge as lifeguards is more than that, because we're supposed to provide outreach education, not happening. Warning signs to the public and stuff with signs, hazards, providing preventative lifeguarding to meet the USLA standards. We're not, they're not doing that. I believe the individual lifeguards are willing and able and ready to do the job. They're just not being supervised properly. Ocean Rescue lifeguards are not just charged for responding rescues and saving people in a war. They're supposed to do educational outreach, as I said, which is considered preventative lifeguarding, which means they're supposed to warn people of root currents and the other hazards. Another example, in 2015, Bevarre County, identifying the extension of lifeguards to the unprotected areas, purchased several ATVs to expand the coverage, and should be patrolling constantly in the unguarded areas. We should see them moving around as much as we do the beach rangers. You don't. I've observed four ATVs parked at one station, from the ton it takes me to go and check my stations, from Coconuts all the way down to Canaveral and back, and they're still there, up to a group of six lifeguards at one tower. None of them on the beach patrolling ATVs, four ATVs sitting there. And I asked the county, they need to reboot their lifeguard management. They need to go back and look deep at how they're being supervised. Because the boat with issues, nobody wants to buy a boat that don't float. Conclusion, it's imperative that we only fund or pay for. We should not pay for an organization that's not providing us USLA professional lifeguards. As much as I advocate lifeguards, we're not getting what we're paying for. So we need them to step up and provide the, the lifeguards with proper management supervision, USLA standards, before we consider using them again. That's my case.
You mentioned a video. What does it show?
The video is a, I'll go down. I thank you for the time. The video breaks down, sitting The video breaks down, sitting at the, the tower, you can see the tower clearly. A group of kids are coming in, multiple 12, 13, they unloaded a, a van or a bus, they come out to the beach and let me tell you this, lifeguards under my charge, when we supervise them correctly, even the chief as I was, I would be out there and I'd intervene, I'd see this group and I'd go over and make contact, immediate preventative lifeguarding. There's rip currents, red flags flying, please be cautious, maybe don't go in the water here, but have a good day and we'll be here to watch you. I would appoint a lifeguard to go and stand by that group because now, this is the only group that was on the beach. So that video shows that beach coming, are those students coming out? They get into the water, no movement, the tower's sitting right there, no movement from the tower. Then these people get into the water, they start frolicking around, they're in a known rip. Lifeguards should have identified the rip when they got to work that morning. No intervention, no preventative lifeguarding. It's still happening. Because like, the drowning doesn't just happen, it starts occurring. They get out a little bit further, they're flailing around, there starts to be some activity, there's the chaperones start grabbing rings and running into the water yelling for help. Still, no lifeguard present. Only was it, the, the tower, the camera pans away at a moment and then one of the beach rangers, I believe his name's Tony. Tony, you guys heard this, you've seen this? Tony said he went bang on, on the station and then a lifeguard emerges and comes out fully dressed, looking around to see what's going on, and he did proceed and help with some medical, and then there was law enforcement, were first on hand, and they were doing CPR to try and save one that we lost on Christmas Eve.
It was actually our fire personnel, I believe, that was first on scene? Or the ones that pulled him out?
I believe it was, uh, it was Cooper, was it not?
I'm not sure who it was.
I believe it was Cooper from what I understand.
It was Cocoa Beach, though, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, Cocoa Beach, Cocoa Beach was first reaction.
There was a lifeguard on duty.
There was a lifeguard.
There were lifeguards on duty, they're supposed to be, break it down, you're supposed to have a supervisor group that have the four-wheelers, captain and lieutenant. You're supposed to have two lifeguards in the tower. One lifeguard's supposed to be in the tower, air traffic control, and the other one is supposed to keep their feet wet. Under my charge, they had to walk one hour and then rotate. I never see them get out of the tower. And again, it's not the fault of the lifeguards, it's because they don't have the proper supervision. As chief, I was down there every day. I was sharing stories how I used to run mock rescues.
We're gonna, we're gonna stop this now, I appreciate it, that was good, the information was there, you were there, there was no, there was lifeguards on duty, but somebody did drown.
Let me add this. What they're, I think they're trying to say is they, they pace out a sign and put a sign up that says you're leaving a lifeguarded area and, and that's not a determined link. In USLA standards, they don't have one on what's a guarded area. Our mantra is if you can see it, you can save it. In fact, there was just something they posted on Facebook, how they were so proud of seeing and saving something outside of the lifeguard area. Between towers is our lifeguard area. That's why they got the four-wheelers.
Thank you, Wyatt.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. So we've got some, some stuff here too that shows, this is what they're advertising right here, they've got a whole presentation. If you look on the left in every one of these presentations, it says, "Swim near a lifeguard." Right here, Cocoa Beach, Orlando's closest beach, swim near a lifeguard. How Cocoa Beach does happy hour, swim near a lifeguard. I think they mentioned something about getting blasted and going swimming. How Cocoa Beach does art shows, swim near a lifeguard. Some more lifeguard. This is what they're advertising on 95 and down on 528. Play Cocoa Beach Beach Line, head east. Cocoa Beach, head east. They're driving people here. So the question is, do you really think that we should pay for these lifeguards? Or do you think the people that are driving the people here should pay? We voted, we voted to work with them and say, "You know what? We'll do status quo. We'll give you what we've been doing because we feel like, you know, we'll do our part." But after that, they then had another meeting and said, "We don't want to pay. They're going to pay $800,000. We're not trying to negotiate with them, this is what we want to do." So I, I would like to propose that...
To have some more discussion before you...
Yeah, yeah. But what I'd like to propose is that we don't pay. And this is not because I don't care about safety, I care about safety first and foremost. I'm not saying I don't want lifeguards. I'm saying we're not responsible for lifeguards. So I would propose that we would, um, vote to give them nothing for this year and the next year when they, when that other one rolls out, we'll give them nothing again. But, go ahead.
So I had similar, thank you for that Wyatt and the mayor. I had a whole dissertation written up on points, I want to summarize this in a closing. I 100% agree with the safety side. I mean, it's not disputable, that's one that's been perverted. They're, they're cherry-picking information to make it seem like Cocoa Beach doesn't want it. And I want to make it crystal clear that we are providing assets. Cocoa Beach assets are there on our dime. It's not for lifeguards, it's for our fire and rescue guys. But this is simply a revenue share, not a cost share. I mean, we all know there's a massive disconnect between how much Cocoa Beach is contributing and how much we're actually receiving from the TDC. So for me, it's a revenue share, they're asking for a cost share. Share that revenue with us, we're getting 3% of what we contribute to their funds. So I absolutely believe they should be paying for it. And I'll leave it at that. Commissioner.
You have something you want to say?
Yeah, um, the funds, I think it was close to, it was between $87,000 and $90,000 that what we committed in the last, in the last vote.
It was $89,000, I believe.
Eighty-nine. Eighty-nine, okay. So I was, I was pretty much bracketing.
So this conversation is for future, that's not for this year?
No, I, I want to vote for this year.
So, so what, my argument at the last meeting, and roll the tape if you want, but I will pull it up in a clip, was that I believe we, the city of Cocoa Beach, have a, you know, just a matter of caution, uh, safety, liability to provide lifeguards part of the time at our city parks, which are Fisher Park and Shepherd Park. And the way I looked at it, for the $800,000 that covers the lifeguards over the entire city, that the county was saying that, that's, you know, they're going to pay for that if we paid our $89,000, that that $89,000 was a good number for providing lifeguards at our two city parks. And I think we owe that to our residents to say, "Hey, if you want to go somewhere where there's lifeguards, go to these city parks, we covered it, we paid for it and, and we have lifeguards." So I just, to just say no and put up signs that say, uh, you know, "No, no lifeguard on duty, swim at your own risk," the price of the life and the tarnishment on our city reputation is not worth it, not from a tourism standpoint, but also from a resident's standpoint. I mean, Mayor, I think, roll the tape, you stated that, you know, people that live here don't need lifeguards because they know what a rip current is, they know how to swim and all that, but it's not really actually the case. There's people that have lived, bought a property here, been here a couple of years, kids are old enough to get in the water and they, they don't know what a rip current is and all that.
The fact of the matter is...
They're avid surfers and all that. So I believe that we owe it to our constituency and our city to provide lifeguards at our city beaches. And the, the mechanism to do that through the county already had lifeguards in place was, you know, worth the money and cheaper than us creating another leg of the fire rescue folks in the city of Cocoa Beach and the fire department to train and provide ocean...
Did you watch that meeting, the whole meeting? They didn't propose that we're going to let them pay the $89,000. They proposed that we're not going to give them the money. If they want to buy lifeguards, we'll match them with a grant. They're, they're not going to give us anything.
No, the agreement that we gave to Wayne to submit was what they asked us for.
Yeah. Then, then they went and did a meeting without announcing and said, "All right, this next year, we're not going to give them..."
Well, that hasn't gone to the commission, that was a budget meeting.
It was on the commission, the commission voted for it. Did you watch it?
That was, that was a budget meeting.
Yeah, and then it was voted.
It was a policy meeting.
And then it was voted.
You're saying the county has passed their budget? I doubt it. It's way too early in the budget cycle.
It was voted to put the grant proposal in. They voted it. So what I'm saying is, okay, they don't want to, they don't want to go, they don't want to go status quo, they want to, they want to do exactly what they said before. So if that's what they want to do, I want to hold my ground and say, "You guys bring the people here, we pay, we pay our taxes, we do pay our taxes, that should cover our, our residents and then the TDC should cover all the people they're bringing. We already pay taxes for it." That's the way I see it.
Um, you know, watching that meeting made me think of a lot of things. It made me think of, first of all, so many tourists, I think the last time we, we, we put a number on it, it's like 3 million tourists come here a year. Our public safety, just fire and police, our staff to support the residents, the number that our staff just to support the residents of 11,000, yet they have to take care of those 3 million people, which we fund ourselves. And, and now we're expected to do that...
5.6 million.
And we're expected, and we're expected to do that for the lifeguards now, too.
Yes.
So we're taking more and more. And already, you know, I just heard Chief Grimes say, like, on Tuesday, he's like, "Oh, we had to keep our, our people, our fire, Cocoa Beach Fire, out on the beach longer on Tuesday because they were supporting so many rescues just that one day."
We also assist.
We are there, we are there, you know?
We assist.
And that's, that's from our budget and the fact...
Forty-six percent is from non-residents, which comes out to $5.6 million in money that we spend for non-residents for their safety.
Exactly. And the fact that they're saying that one drowning occurred while the lifeguards were, what, oh, he was saying that they weren't there, but they were there. Then, then they're like, "Well, there was 14 others, like, on off-hours. Well, why don't, if they're trying to present a product to us, why aren't they extending the hours to take care of those other 14? I mean, why are we paying, why are we paying, you know?" And then also, I was told by our, I think Chief Grimes was kind of keeping an eye on the lifeguard schedule and who was supposed to be there and how many were supposed to be in the, in the towers. And they weren't always the numbers that we contracted to support. So, I mean, besides what Wyatt is saying we're not paying for, we're also not paying, we're paying for, we're not getting enough staff like we contracted.
Yeah.
So I would, I would agree with you. I mean, I kind of take back my agreement for the $89,000 in 2024.
Well, we didn't send it yet and that's why I'm here with you guys.
And I, I kind of want to take that back and, and seeing all the points, how they're, he's like targeting Cocoa Beach and assuming what we do with our money, you know, and not even coming and meeting with us.
Right.
To see if, you know, his assumptions are correct and I really resent that.
Exactly.
So I, I would take back my vote on that.
Okay. So does somebody want to make a motion to amend their last vote?
Well, can I make one more comment before you do?
Yes.
Unless this, taking back the vote and then revoting, unless there's an amendment to come up with a guarantee, a way to fund lifeguards at our city beaches as part of that motion, then I'm not going to support it.
So anybody else want, so you made a motion to amend it?
I didn't make it official, but I will if you want me to.
I would like that, yes.
The motion is to revisit the vote that we had at the last meeting.
Okay.
I make a motion to revisit the, the vote that we made on the, on our expenditure of lifeguards for 2024.
Got a motion in a second. Anybody want to do public comment on that? I'd like to hear from him.
No, no, no. You, you don't have votes to even bring it up yet.
We got a motion in a second.
Yeah, but you...
He's asking for comments before this vote.
Okay. To undo a vote?
Yeah.
Then there has to be a vote to...
Yes, there will be another one.
Okay.
There'll be another, there'll be another one.
Well, I can have one on this, too. Go ahead.
John Loes, 444 Dempsey Drive. Just a thought, we in Cocoa Beach look at the tourists that come here, 2.5 or 3 million a year, like Carolyn said, and we feel that we're putting forward, you know, public safety support for them and we feel that it's unfair that the county doesn't contribute to the public safety. And I agree with that. It just seems completely unfair. But if we take the approach on the lifeguards, that we're not going to put anything forward for the 11,000 people that live here, that's doing the same thing to the county that the county's doing to us. You know, it's unfair that they don't help us with public safety, but it would be unfair if we don't help contribute to the, to the beach safety for the 11,000 people that are here. I do agree with the mayor that probably the biggest issue with beach safety is probably tourists because they are unfamiliar with this area, but the 11,000 people that live here do need some beach support. So I think, you know, whether the number's 89,000 or it's some other number, to me, it would be only fair that we put something forward. However, they carry the lion's share of it, which they're trying to not do. They should carry the lion's share of it. And it also would be fair if they helped us with public safety. So I would urge the commission not to take a stance of zero because that's doing to them the same thing they're doing to us, unless that's the point we want to make.
The point we want to make...
You're doing it to us, so we're going to do it to you. But it seems like we should put something forward for our people, but certainly not cover the whole costs. Maybe it's a 90, 90%, 10% split or something. Just my thought.
Can I say something else? I have to put a card in.
I don't think you have to put a card in for a public comment on the top.
Come on up.
Like I stated earlier, it is paramount that we do have lifeguards, I'm an advocate of that. However, we can come up with other solutions for our city until, I think the lifeguard can go, the, the county can go back, reboot their management, if they want to come back to us at some point and say, "We got a USLA better crew proved to us," because they're going to be operating in a tower, at least Lori Wilson within Cocoa Beach. You guys know that, right?
Yeah.
They're not going to abandon Cocoa Beach completely, they're going to be in the county park. We can watch what they're doing, but there are solutions for our city to take care of our people and the people that come here. Now, there's a big burden with the tourists coming, absolutely. That's where we need something, a bigger force, which the county offers. But like I said earlier in my, my little speeches, they're not up to snuff. You said that earlier about Chief Grimes monitoring, I've seen that myself. They'll have one person in the tower all day. They're not meeting the contract that they're, and the USLA standards, so why should we pay for that? We should take that money and put it into a solution for our city and maybe later look at them and if they can prove that they, they've improved their lifeguard core, then they would be, in my value, again, priceless. $800,000 is, is nothing.
Thank you, Wyatt. We're going to keep going with this. Okay. So the point is, they're going to pay for the lifeguards, they're advertising it from here to New York. Unless they're going to change their whole marketing scheme, they're paying for the lifeguards. That's the way it's going.
John Dillon, living in East Osceola. Not really decided which way's the right way or wrong, but my concern is, this is Section G, City Commission Reports on Announcements. I don't think that you can legally make a motion and vote on something during this meeting at this time. I think you got to bring it up to the next meeting and do it to agenda again because nobody else in the public in the city or anybody else knows about this. I don't think you can legally bring up a motion and vote on it at this meeting.
Thank you.
You can.
I believe you can because we have already voted on this before and it has already been announced. All right, so we got a motion in a second to, what was it, to...
Revisit.
Revisit the vote.
Revisit it.
All in favor to revisit the vote?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion passes 4 to 1. Okay, we got a motion to re-vote on that agreement.
So the motion last time was to...
Give them 89,000 dollars and we get lifeguards in all of Cocoa Beach.
Okay. I was thinking it was voting for $0.
No. The motion that passed last time that we're revisiting was to agree with the county to pay them $89,000 to have the same lifeguard coverage that we had this previous year.
I think we need to...
Including Fisher Park and Shepherd Park.
And now there's new information that their plan is to offer grants. And you know, grants turn into weaning us off to take on 100% of that ownership.
And so we were revisiting, and I think we need a motion and a second to make a new decision. And then we can discuss it and then make our vote, correct?
Well, you just agreed to make a new decision or reaffirm the old decision, whatever you're going to do. But now it would be appropriate to make a motion, whatever you want to do, whether it's, you know, $0 starting now.
We have to make the motion and then... If we are going to overturn the...
Motion, then discuss. Not discuss, then motion, right?
You motioned and then discussed.
Just wanted to make sure.
If the intent is to change the outcome from last time, do we need to make a motion and then reject that? Or do we just not bring the motion and it is rejected?
We make the motion that we want to contribute.
I'll make the motion to revisit the exact same vote we had last time for the 89,000 dollar offer.
We already did that.
We already did that.
We are making the motion to vote on sending the offer letter with an $89,000 or whatever the number is, the $89,000 that previously passed.
Second.
Okay.
Wait, can you say that again?
I don't understand the motion that's...
Same motion as before.
The motion is to...
If it fails, then it's off the books.
Okay, got it.
The motion passed last time, I think.
You have to motion and fail it.
The motion will fail this time, so I'm bringing up the exact same motion to send the letter that Cocoa Beach is going to be obligated to 89,000 dollar contribution to lifeguards.
Okay, second.
And I think we got a motion and a second. A motion and a second. All right, any discussion?
I believe a nay vote opens it back up and pushes us back to having to visit, correct?
If it ends up being three nays, then the issue's basically dead and you bring up something new for another commission meeting.
Oh, not for another commission. It doesn't have to be at another commission meeting.
We could do it now.
This is a regular meeting.
How we're going to cover lifeguards at our two city parks.
We do. The county's going to pay. That's the solution. We're not paying. That's the solution. The county's paying.
They haven't committed to paying.
They sure seem like they did. I saw all those advertisements that says swim near a lifeguard.
You're playing Russian roulette with people's lives, man.
So I don't think it's as simple as it was last time. I think there was an ask from the county for 89,000, and they would pay the 90% above that. And what we heard from them is that they plan to go forward with, no, we're going to stick the bill to Cocoa Beach. They're going to have to apply for a grant, and they're going to have to do matching funding to get the total balance of that. So I don't think that the 89,000 is an offer on the table anymore.
Okay, I believe that the 89,000 is an offer on the table until October 1st of this year.
So I don't think that that is the direction they're going. So I think...
No, and I think what they have voted on in the budget meeting...
Is for the following fiscal year.
It's for the fiscal year beginning October 1st.
Right, so this carries this lifeguards through the end of this fiscal year for $89,000.
And I think the problem is, we are not getting the service we're paying for. I think we're seeing that we are lacking in the quality of service. We are getting a county commission who is being untruthful and misrepresenting our city and then looking to give us a 400% increase in our...
Then we really lack quality of service. We'll have zero quality of service.
So I think they've got skin in the game, just as much or more than we do. And I agree with the mayor that they have as much obligation to their county citizens and residents as we do. But they have the wherewithal financially to do it, and they are walking away from that. They have signaled that already, and I think it's ridiculous.
And I was incorrect on the term of what they sent over. It begins March 23rd, 2024, and it ends September 2nd, 2024, which I assume is the end of the lifeguard season.
So you're paying 89,000 for a few months. I just think they have changed the game and it merits a response from Cocoa Beach.
They've clearly shown that their intent is to do this 50-50 cost share now, but that leads into, you guys have this budgeted. We're not going to give them...
With a complete disregard for, like you said, Commissioner, the revenue share. They are pulling so much money out of Cocoa Beach and then asking for more.
Right.
And I think, to use Tobias' terms, it's a little disingenuous to cherry pick data and tell the story.
Exactly.
I appreciated Commissioner Steele's perspective and that he was even-handed with that, but I did not feel we got a fair shake from the rest.
All right, sounds good. I agree. So we had a motion to vote whether or not we wanted to approve that 89,000. Do I got a second?
Yes.
No, I just got a...
Okay, you got a second? Right, all right. So all in favor to approve the 89,000? Yay?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed to disapprove?
Aye.
I disapprove.
Or you.
I disapprove, so that's a aye.
Okay, sorry.
Translate that as you will.
I screwed it up. But anyways, so it passed 4-0 to not...
To disapprove.
4-0. Okay, so now we...
I don't count anymore?
4-1.
4-1.
We'll give them 4-2.
Sometimes you count. All right, I screwed that one all up, but so we are...
On to the agenda.
So now, do we need to do anything beyond that?
We need to vote?
Do we need to vote now to not fund it?
We don't have to.
True.
We don't have enough data to know what's going to happen, what's the next shoe to drop. We just know right now they could terminate lifeguards tomorrow.
Well, it would be as of March... March 23rd.
Yeah, as of March 23rd, peak of spring break season, there could be zero lifeguards in Cocoa Beach.
That would be really bad press for them. I'll tell you that.
If someone wanted to make a motion, they could make a motion to do whatever you want to do, to specifically not send this...
We already did that.
Well, you decided not to pay for it.
We didn't approve to send that.
Correct.
I voted, I was the only vote to send it.
We should let her finish saying what she's going to say.
To officially send them a letter that we're not going to do this because they may not...
But they haven't even seen that yet.
This is something they sent us.
So then, so does somebody want to make a motion that we'll send them a letter saying we're not going to be paying this?
I'll make a motion to modify that letter to take the 89,000 to $0.
Okay.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second to take the thing down to 89. All in favor to take it down to 0?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
May.
Motion passes 4-1. All right, thank you, guys. I feel like we accomplished something there. All right, that was... I'm sorry, that was a long staff or commissioner report, but...
Are we going to start the meeting?
We can start the meeting now.
I'll allow it.
The good news is it should be pretty quick.
All right, consent agenda.
Okay, this is the consent agenda. Item 1, approve the February 15, 2024 commission meeting minutes. Representative, City Clerk Department, recommendation approved. Item 2, approve the selection of Breen Aquatic Inc. for the completion of the Golf Course Aquatic Vegetation Harvesting Project, RFP number CB 24003 for the sum of $260,855. This is a budgeted item for fiscal year '24. Soil grant received for $592,350. This is a budgeted item and funded with a soil grant. Representative Jared Francis, City Engineer, and Kelsey Mack, Environmental and Sustainability Program Manager, recommendation approved. Item 3, approve the 2023 Board Committee Annual Reports, Board of Adjustment, Planning Board, Sustainability Committee, General Employee Pension Board, Land Management Committee, Leisure Services Board, Police, Fire Pension Board. Representative Wayne Carragino, City Manager, recommendation approved. Item 4, approve the CRA and Gregory DePulito and Penelope DePulito addendum to original agreement that took place on February 1st, 2024, that was approved by the CRA Board. Representative Devon Tally, Community Redevelopment Administrator, recommendation approved. Item 5, approve the 2023 CRA Annual Report that was approved by the CRA Board. Representative Devon Tally, Community Redevelopment Administrator, recommendation approved. Item 6, adopt Resolution Number 2024-03, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Cocoa Beach for Bar County, Florida, authorizing the city manager to apply for a Florida Inland Navigational District fine grant to renovate Bicentennial Park by executing Attachment E7, providing for an effective date. The total cost of the project is estimated at $3,300,000. The fine grant is $750,000. Fine requires that the City Commission adopt a resolution to proceed with the grant application. This is a budgeted item for fiscal year '24. Representative Andrew Hansen, Senior Accountant, recommendation adopt. Item 7, approve the scope of services for engineering and design of the Ramp Road Park Southwest Improvements, Task Order 12, in the amount of $162,239.92. This is a budgeted item in fiscal year '24. Representative Jared Francis, City Engineer, and Morgan Zulecki, Staff Engineer, recommendation approved. Item 8, authorize the city manager or designate to enter into a contract with BDI Marine Contractors LLC for the construction of the McNabb Parkway Bio-Swell and Seawall Improvements, RFP CB 24002, in the amount of $361,410. This is a budgeted item for fiscal year '24. Representative Jared Francis, City Engineer, and Morgan Zulecki, Staff Engineer, recommendation approved.
We have to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Unfinished business.
Okay, item 1, adopt Ordinance 1687 on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Cocoa Beach, Florida, adopting a new Article 2 Special Budget Funds and a new Section 2-11 of that Article 2 Capital Projects Funds of Chapter 2 Administration, providing for the establishment and funding of a Capital Projects Fund of the Cocoa Beach Code of Ordinances and providing for codification, conflicts, availability, and an effective date. Representative, City Commission, recommendation adopt.
We have to adopt Ordinance 1687 on second reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comment?
Yeah.
I'm not seeing the desirement in this ordinance anymore.
The endeavor language?
The endeavor language. It makes it look like it's a...
It's the same exact verbiage as the first reading?
I didn't change it, so...
Well, it was originally proposed as we endeavor to...
I know it said it last time, so let's make sure it does.
It didn't tire.
Oh, here it is. It says on B, it says the third sentence down, "In each succeeding budget year, the City Commission shall endeavor, but will not be required, to budget approximately 3% of the city's total budget to the CPF."
You're looking at Section 211B?
Uh-huh.
Says, "shall consider funding the CPF."
Yes, and then keep on going. You'll consider it.
Okay, but will not be required. I got it.
And it's worth checking.
Okay, I support.
My position is, I voted yes last time. I think it provides the residents better visibility if we have the diligence to upkeep and plan stuff in the CIP plan. I understand Mr. Tamolte made the comment of, I don't want to have this black box of unspoken. I 100% agree with the financial meaning of this. I'm the only one that was pushing back on the budget last year. I'm concerned that we're not going to be able to have excess funds, surplus funds, anywhere that's going to carve this. So I don't think it's going to be... I start to lose what's the point I have in this. It's just another ordinance. I understand it's a goal, but that should just be built into our platform of fiscal funding.
So the way it was explained to me from Patricia was that when we have funds like this, first thing we do is we put everything... You know, we pay our debts.
There's a prioritization.
And then we put everything in... The second priority is putting everything into these funds. And at the very end is when, you know, if we're not starting to make stuff line up, this is something that, you know, we can pull from if we have to. But this is to try to make it a priority.
So let me ask you this, though. Wouldn't we... If we ever came to a situation where we've reconciled the budget for that year and we realize we have a surplus that potentially could go in here, wouldn't we just accelerate a future capital plan into that year to consume that budget? So I don't think this will literally... I don't think we'll ever have a surplus that goes in here.
I mean...
Again, I agree with the concept 100%.
If the concept doesn't work, then this fund goes towards paying off debt in the event that our debt is making... It's costing us more interest than we would be gaining from this fund.
What are your thoughts on it?
I'm just trying to appease the mayor. It was his idea. Without raising taxes, there's not going to be any money to put into that fund. Every penny that is projected to come into the city is going to get spent on backlog of maintenance and repairs and essential services and capital things that are getting us to the point where it's more expensive to maintain than to replace because we don't have the money.
We can endeavor to do it, though. That's the good thing. I'm going to play a snippet of our meeting from when we had... When we were talking about actually going through with agreeing to buy the... Or do the City Hall project. And this is from our previous fearless leader, Ben Malik.
Let's see if he... This plays here. So borrow the money. We have so many deferred projects because of all the rollbacks over the years. And we've never allocated enough in our budget process to ensure that everything... I'd rather take the savings and do the 20-year. Take that 10-year money and put it in a kitty to make sure that whoever's sitting up here 60 years from now doesn't have to go through this nightmare again, that there's a kitty of money set aside, proper, long-term financial planning. We need to be thinking 50, 60 years out.
And if I might, Mayor, just to kind of illustrate one other thing.
Even the former mayor agreed that we need to set money aside for our projects. If we don't, we're going to be in the same situation time after time again. And like I said, it's an endeavor. If you don't want it, if we can't do it, we don't do it. But at least we have a plan. Hey, rather than there's extra money in the budget, we'll figure out a way to spend it somewhere else. Let's try to save it.
I think he was also referring to raising mileage rates so you could get that, too. He was... He always... That leaves some of that out of that snippet. But in order to do that, I agree with them. That's what I've been trying to say. In order to get that extra money, yeah, you're going to have to raise the mileage rate and get this money from somewhere. Where are we going to get it from? We're always, you know, we always have money allocated for... And I think our... I mean, I like the ideal concept of it. It makes a lot of sense. But in the end, I really have faith in our staff, the finance department, in our... department, and our city manager that they're going to plan this in a strategic plan, where to spend this money five to ten years out and do these capital projects we need. And it's been, it's been, they do a good job. It's been working. So I also think our, with all the past capital projects we've done, especially the buildings and stuff, our staff has, the finance, the CFO, their whole department has been able to find like government subsidized loans where we have really low interest rates. So it's almost better to keep the money in the bank as opposed to paying all cash for things. So, I mean, overall, I think it's better to just do what we're doing. And I think it's a great idea. But and last, you know, I don't think we really need to do it. I guess what I'm saying.
So, again, if it's to endeavor and if we don't have the money, what does it hurt to start a fund to try to make sure we can have a little extra money to put towards something in the future? If you don't have the money, we don't have to do it. It's an endeavor.
How do we know? I mean, it'd be one thing if we knew all of us were going to be there to allocate this money. How do we know, whatever commission, what they're going to use?
I brought that up when you first brought it up, that it's going to, let's say there was accumulated judiciously half a million dollars a year, five years from now, it's two and a half million dollars. We're still paying our other bills. Whether we had to raise millage rate and taxes to pay our other bills and keep feeding the kitty, none of us are going to be up here, you know, and, well, not, none of us, maybe. An election cycles will have flushed through in five years. Okay, let's just put it that way. So then somebody's going to just pick a pet project and say, well, there's two and a half million dollars. Let's go spend it.
Like a fire station in the North End? I mean, we have enough stuff coming up.
I agree with the concept, okay?
And just so you guys know, because there's talk that I want this for a marina fund.
Throw's going next.
And I'm going to tell you right now, absolutely, I do not intend on any of our residents to pay for the marina other than our feasibility study. The fund will be from a revenue bond where the marina will pay for itself. I do not intend for anybody, I do not intend to use this for the marina project. The only money I intend to use city money for is our feasibility study. So just so you know, that would be a revenue bond. And obviously, the way we would do the revenue bond is because that feasibility was tell us that it's profitable, would be profitable, and that we could do that revenue bond. So just so you know, I'm not, I'm not doing this. This is altruistically something that I want to do because I know we're going to have to do this fire station coming up. I know that we're going to have projects. We're never going to be at a loss for important projects. This has nothing to do with me wanting to use it for the marina, just so you guys know. This is solely because I know we have that North End project getting ready to come up. And within five years, within the next election cycle, we're going to be fifty million dollars in debt. I'm just telling you right now. So unless we start saving now, we're just going to keep inching up, inching up. So that's my two cents. I'll leave it at that. I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but...
Any public comment on that?
Yeah, go ahead. Every can of eighteen-hundred-minute men cause me. I'm just a little bit puzzled on the logistics of it, especially when you're in a situation where you actually set the millage rate first and then you figure out your priorities. And I just, I just, so far I have not seen the millage rate set high enough to even meet the requirements of the current budget year. So I just am wondering where this extra money is going to come from unless the commission is willing to bite the bullet a little bit and give that flexibility within the millage rate, which so far, historically, the commission has not done so.
Thank you. Yeah, so my, like I said, if we have it set as an endeavor, at the end of the year, if they bounce the budget and they have a little extra for this and that, which we do from time to time, they found, we found, it was like a couple hundred thousand or something at the end of this year, and the previous city manager was all ready to go spend it on whatever she had an idea for. So alls I'm saying is, unless we make a plan for it, somebody's going to figure out a way to spend it year after year anyways.
So you don't intend to or have a intention to raise the millage rate this year based on what you're...
I don't intend to try to raise the millage rate at all. That is, my intention is to figure out ways to save money or to make money so that the residents don't have to have a millage rate saved. So... Do we have no motion? We had a motion in a second, right? Are you guys ready for a vote?
I think so.
Okay. All in favor to do the capital projects?
Roll call, second reading.
Oh, yeah. Roll call for the capital projects fund.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Willis?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Hutcheson?
Aye.
Mayor Capri?
Aye. Motion passes four one. Thank you, guys. All right.
Move to approve item K one.
I've got to read it.
Second.
All right. That was good.
No.
I'm not required to read this.
Life back and ready.
Okay. Approve the scope of services for engineering and design and fee estimate in the amount of three-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-fourty-six dollars from Black and Beach Corporation to perform work on A1A gravity sewer pipe replacement project. The engineering and design for this project is a budgeted item this fiscal year. Representative Brad Calzo, Water Reclamation Director, recommendation approved.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any public comment? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All opposed? Motion passes five oh. All right, any general public comment?
I didn't have enough time at the beginning.
Motion, we're adjourned.